I hope everyone had a great holiday season and is ready to get back to work. Also, wanted to recognize Chief Freddie Johnson, who's in the audience with us as well. Thanks for being here this morning. And just to let the listening audience know, or the viewing audience know, Commissioner Council will be on video slash on telephone, so she'll be remote this morning. We'll go ahead and move to the invocation. Vice Chairwoman Jones, if you'll give us the invocation, please.
Good morning. For those that can stand, please do so. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for allowing us to be here on this very first Monday of 2025. We ask that everything be done in decency and order. We thank you for this opportunity to make choices and decisions that will impact in a positive way all those that live in Cumberland County. Again, we just thank you, and then we just ask that we move forward in a positive direction from this day until the new, until the end of the year, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead and move to item one, approval of the agenda. County manager, any changes for the agenda?
Yes, Chairman DeVeere, there's one change. Item 3E needs to be moved to item 4D, item of business. The update on the status of the litigation needs to be item 4D. That's all the changes from staff to the agenda.
Commissioners, any changes? You're recognized. If you have any changes to the agenda.
No for approval.
Got a move, motion for approval of the agenda and a second. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and ask for your vote. Raise your right hand. Go ahead and move to item two, presentation, digital dispatch update. County manager, you want to give us a, introduce the item?
Yes. Gene Booth, emergency services director, will present this item. As you know, we've been discussing digital dispatch in the county, and Gene will provide updating, answering questions you have. We have a funding model, and additionally, if implemented this year, vastly helped the rural fire service.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman DeVeere, commissioners, I hope you're all doing well and having a great New Year. So, we're going to talk a little bit about digital dispatch update, project update, but first, let's talk about what is digital dispatch. Digital dispatch is a software, hardware system that can be added to our current CAD that's going to enhance fire dispatch efficiency and first response efficiency. This will work for both fire and EMS. We're working with EMS to bring them onboard as well. I know that they have an interest. So, what that does is the 911 caller calls, we receive the 911 call, the call taker starts to process the call, they confirm the phone number, address, and type call. From there, the typical way this works is the fire dispatcher will click on a recommend button, it'll tell them dependent upon the type call and where the location, what units need to respond. Then they verbalize that over the radio to, for, to the fire departments. What this will do is it'll take away that act of having to verbalize, and it'll be automated through CAD, it'll be automated over the radio to give them the dispatch, the location, and the type call. What this does for emergency services and 911 is it allows that dispatcher the opportunity to answer the radio for all those units checking in and out that are not using the mobile CAD at the time. So, really, this really enhances the, enhances the efficiency of our dispatch. Another piece to this is automatically when they hit a dispatch button, it's going to send a text and a digital dispatch to each fire department. They have the option to purchase equipment at their, for their fire station for fire department alerting. It may be a bell, it may be a siren, it may be lights that gradually come on during the night for, for health reasons, it reduces the stress and wake up. Or it could be a digital, this is a digital message board that provides them the information of the call. So, it allows for enhanced fire dispatch, allows for more rapid dispatching of fire, fire events. What's involved in this? There's multiple vendors and components of this system to make it happen. First, we have the CAD integration software and equipment itself, which we've, we've identified a vendor that would fit our, our needs the best, both the 911 and the fire departments, including City of Fayetteville. A CAD integration software piece that connects this equipment into the CAD, and then also a radio, a new, a designated 911 radio console will have to be added to this, into the server room as well, that's dedicated just for this purpose. All of those, of course, has a cost. The majority of this can come from emergency telephone system funds. We have that already in a fund balance. There is a portion, 50% of the radio, of $47,000 will have to come from general fund. Sorry, I should have moved on, on to that. My apologies. And kind of, to complete this project, we need to ensure that all those budget needs are in place. It may require a couple of budget amendments to, particularly for the general fund, and get the money out of, the funds out of the fund balance into the emergency telephone fund, and of course, process all contracts for approval and requisition. Over the last year, we've been trying to overcome some administrative turnover. We've been highly focused on our day-to-day operations, our bread and butter operations, keeping 911 going. Really time to move forward on this project. That's my short presentation. I'm not much for death by PowerPoint, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate the, the non-death by PowerPoint because I think we feel the same way. I'll go ahead and recognize Commissioner Tyson for questions, and open it up to any other commissioners for questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the, giving us an update on this item. One of the questions I have is, once, once you're given direction from the board, how quickly can you move to implement the system, or what's the timeline that you're looking at to implement it?
So, consideration of the budget amendments, I believe they'll have to go before a board meeting. Also, processing contracts and through both finance and, and legal, on average, that's a month to two months. Maybe two months with the budget amendments, and that's an aggressive move on that. I think with everybody working collaboratively, we can accomplish that.
Any other questions? Any follow-ups? Commissioner Tyson? Any other commissioner questions? Just a quick question from the chair. Again, thank, thank you for the presentation. The timeline to actually implement it, though, not the contracting, but to actually put it into operation.
So, the vendor provided that, once it's in place, an 18-month implementation. I think that also considers the equipment the fire departments would buy for the station alerting. I think it's a much shorter timeline for what would be put into 911, as far as the equipment and the voice dispatch.
And my last question is around engagement with cities and municipalities on this process.
Yes, our City of Fayetteville has been involved in this process and the planning since the beginning. The core of this, they'll be able to utilize, but they'll have to buy some equipment for them to, to receive the data. They use, they operate on a different radio system. There may be a need for them to purchase a separate radio console for their radio system. That, that needs a little bit more research.
In the remaining county volunteer fire?
All of those are involved, yes.
Yes, sir. Coordination has been, has happened with.
Yes, sir. We, we share updates as we can at the chiefs' meetings.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you so much for the presentation. We appreciate your time. I don't think there's any action needed, and we'll go ahead and move forward to the consent agenda.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Commissioner Adams, hold, hold, stay that, stay that, stay that motion. Are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would request that item G be removed from the consent agenda and added to section four, items of business.
Second that. Okay. In a second, we need to, all right. Any other, any other changes to consent agenda? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Motion to approve as modified.
Second. A motion to approve the consent agenda, properly second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Commissioner Council. And we'll go ahead and move forward to the items of business, item four.
Yes, the first item of business is a consideration of the change order number one for the Crown Complex parking lot improvements. This past summer, we had some improvements that were done out at the Crown Complex parking lot. Jermaine Walker, Director of Engineering and Infrastructure, will present this item and answer any questions you may have.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Once again, Happy New Year to you. So, this, this first item before you is for the, the change order number one for the Crown Complex parking lot improvements. When the contractor milled the asphalt surface and base layers and the aggregate layer, we discovered a latent soil issue, and then we had to go through and do some, some fine grading to make it suitable for paving. And so, what we're asking for is a change order number one to be approved in the amount of $120,058.35, which would bring the, the new contract amount to $1,154,549.45. And this has been pre-audited and reviewed for legal sufficiency.
Commissioners, any questions or discussion? Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Is the work already been completed, or we still have to?
The work's been completed.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or discussion? If not, ask for a motion. Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve change order number one with Highland Paving Company, LLC, for the Crown Complex parking lot improvements projects in the amount of $120,058.35, increasing the overall contract price from $1,034,491.10 to $1,154,549.45.
Is there a second? Motion's been properly moved and seconded. I'd ask for your vote. Raise your right hands. Affirmative?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Chairman DeVeere, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Adams. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Faircliff.
Do we have Commissioner Council?
She's not.
Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and move to, thank you so much. We'll go ahead and move to item B, consideration of change order one for emergency services center chiller replacement. County manager Greer?
Yes, Jermaine Walker, still at the podium here, will present this item.
Good morning again, sir. Yes, sir. So, this was to replace the, the pre-existing chiller at the emergency services center. The intent was for the, initially for the chiller to remain in place, but once we put it into operation, we noticed that we started to have to replace sensors, control boards, and it was trending toward that the chiller was going to have to experience a significant issue, and for such a, an important facility, we thought it was more prudent to go ahead and to replace the chiller. Plus, it was becoming more difficult to find parts for this chiller, it's 2007 air stack, and then also the, the only, the service rep was in Kernersville. So, and this change order is the amount of $13,250, which was to cover the cost of a temporary chiller that we had in place in order to complete the work.
Anything further?
No, sir.
Commissioners, you have any questions or comments? Mr. Tyson?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I make a motion that we approve change order number one with CMC Dale Mechanical, Incorporated, for the Cumberland County Emergency Services Building Chiller Replacement Project in the amount of $13,250, increasing the contract price to, from $419,000 to $432.250.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been properly made and seconded. I'd ask for your vote. Please raise your right hand. Any affirmative?
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to item C, consideration of change order one for Corporation Drive Outfall Phase One.
I'm turning over to Jermaine.
I think we're going to defer it back to the podium.
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this project is a Golden Leaf-funded project, grant-funded project, that we worked with FCEDC, and what it did was installed a 5,400 linear feet of, of sanitary sewer. There's a graphic, I apologize, it's probably a bit of an eyesore, but it's in the, the green portion in the northeastern part of the graphic. And as I said, 5,400 linear feet, and what it was, the intent is to increase the, the marketability of the area to serve not only 180 acres, but also to, to attract future business for that area. And, and so, this, this work for the change order involved undercutting, backfilling with a larger stone, and also a lot of de-watering. When we started this project, we had significant rain events that almost rained the project out for almost a complete month. And so, this change order covers the cost of additional de-watering, as I said, adding the, the stone in the base, and then also increasing the time, 365 days, so that we can go ahead and complete the project.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, one question that I have for you. I see that this particularly is tied to 180-acre piece.
Yes, sir.
Was there, was there a need, or was, was there a review to see if additional capacity could be added to this system in the future that would incorporate separate users other than just the 180-acre parcel?
Yes.
Was?
Yes. And PWC is currently doing, redoing their feasibility analysis, because their intent is to extend to the, to the south by, by southwest.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioners, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve change order number one with Jimco Construction Company for Corporation Drive Outfall Phase One in the amount of $106,839.80, increasing the overall contract price from $1,616,318 to $1,723,157.80, and extending the project timeline by an additional 365 days.
Is there a second? Motion been properly moved and seconded. I'd ask for your vote, all in the affirmative of this motion. Raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Board, we'll go ahead and move to item.
Thank you, commissioners.
4D. Thank you, sir.
Item 4D will be update on the status of the Chalmers litigation. County, County Attorney Rick Moorefield will present this item and answer any questions you may have.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is just a brief update on, on the status of the, of the current litigation with Chalmers, and I put the entire name of the case and the case number in there for the media's benefit, so that it can be looked up. But the, the action is proceeding in Cumberland County Superior Court, it's not a federal trial. The trial date had been set for March of this year, but it has been moved back to September, not, not, not earlier than September the 10th of this year, 2025. There are no pending motions now, and discovery is ongoing. Extended that, the parties have already exchanged the identities of their expert witnesses, but none of those have been deposed in this case, although they have been deposed in some of the thousands of other cases that are going on with Chalmers. The county tax administrator was opposed to by Chalmers just last month, and the chief of the real estate mapping section of the tax department is going to be deposed this month. The dates that are in place right now, discovery closes in early March 2025, that's a significant event in, in litigation. The summary judgment briefs are due by the middle of May, because the court has ordered mediation past May the 30th of 2025. That will also be a significant date in, in terms of any litigation to step up the effort at settlement, so that's ongoing. The court has provided several potential dates in September or October, and the parties are negotiating a, a start date for the trial. And the reason that's, that's not just an automatic thing is because Chalmers is involved, and our attorneys also are involved in a lot of other cases that are scheduled around in southeast. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? And I just, any questions for the attorney on this case? Attorney Moorefield, I would just ask one thing. If you could, there wasn't a cover sheet, if you can just take the, the information you presented us and shoot it to the commissioners in email, so we've got it, or somewhere that we've got that, those dates and times where some of us were hastily writing them down, so I appreciate it.
Sorry to do that.
We'll go ahead and move forward if there's no other questions. Thank you, Attorney Moorefield, for the update. We'll go ahead and move to the added item, acceptance offer, item E, 4E, acceptance of offer to purchase surplus property located at 400 Beeman Drive, Fayetteville, and I'll ask the attorney to present the item.
This, I mean, and, and the board may wish to change this approach, but the, the procedure in the past has been properties that, that county acquires at tax foreclosure sales. Some of them, if you see in, in the memo, that it was deeded to the county by the city. In the past, we had acquired those properties jointly with the city. Now, since about 2020, we've been just acquiring in our individual, in the county's name, and to kind of cut that step out. But, once they're acquired, my office circulates the property to the city, the county, PWC, all departments, a, a group of, of folks that, that may have some interest in the property for governmental purposes, and if no one identifies it, it's brought to the board, and the board puts it on the surplus property list, which is what the process was for this. And the starting bid on, on any of these is how much the purchase price was at the foreclosure sale. That's where the $8,582.06 comes from. And I always provide the information of the zoning and whether there's a structure on the property, and the tax value when I present these to the board, and all that's in this memo. Since County Manager has, in the last, you know, year or so, been interested in trying to acquire some of these properties potentially or holding for affordable development projects in the future, so when, when I find something that looks like a good prospect, I refer that to the County Manager, and that, that wasn't done with this one. I mean, it wasn't one that I think we would be interested in, but that, that's, that's the process we're using now.
Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One question I would have is, and, and the, the memorandum wasn't very, wasn't as clear as I would have liked it to have been on this, but this parcel did go through a solicitation process where the public was made aware that the property was available and offers were received. I noticed in the memorandum, it said that there would be an upset bid period, but it didn't specifically say that it had gone through a process already, so that was my question.
There is no process before this. The, the process at the, at the zoning, I mean, at the foreclosure proceeding, it, it goes through that process, and the county ends up acquiring. The ones that the county ends up acquiring are typically, there's a reason the county acquired it. It wasn't so, most of them were sold, you know, were actually sold to a third-party investor or someone that's interested in it. But what you're doing now is, once we get an offer, this is the first offer we receive on this property, and once you get that offer and bring it to you, it will now be advertised and go through that process, for the upset bid process.
Commissioner Tyson, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, sir. So, so, given that that's the, the current policy, do, do you have a list that you can provide of current surplus property that the county holds that you can give to the, to the board?
Yes, I, I can, I can send that, email that.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
I guess I'll ask this question. Outside of the commissioner's office, isn't there a surplus list of all the properties? So, there's always, when you come into the door, right there on that door, there's a whole list of, it's probably, I don't know if it's on the website, but there's a list of all properties that's surplus properties that are on the door, and I don't know if it's downstairs.
It's on the website, and on the, when you come into the, off the elevator, that area there, on the left-hand side of the door, there's.
Yeah. And I don't know if it's posted downstairs on the big board or not, because there's a big board downstairs in the basement of the courthouse where all of those notices. Now, we may want to do that, but it is Commissioner Tyson listed, and they, they have it right there.
Commissioner Adams?
No, no, I'm sorry. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Vice Chairwoman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognition. I just wanted to say, because we do have listeners and others viewing, just for sake of transparency, can we just mention who we're speaking of? The offer is for Eric McGallister, on behalf of McGallister Real Estate Investments. I just wanted that to be known, so those that, you know, don't have the paperwork like we do, will know exactly who we're talking about. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I move that we approve the action as outlined by the staff and the attorney. Cumberland County Board of Commissioners notice of intent to accept an offer to purchase certain real property pursuant to NCGS 160A-269. Additionally, I take notice that the Board of Commissioners finds that the real property with PIN number 9487-26-8826, being parts of lots 26 to 27 of Beeman subdivision. Plat book 18, page 42, located at 400 Beeman Drive, Fayetteville, is not needed for governmental purposes, and proposes to accept an offer for, to purchase the property for $8,585. Additionally included in this motion, I would ask that we place a 60-day moratorium on all future offers to purchase certain real property, and that we request that our policy committee review the current policy to receive offers for purchase of real property and come back to our agenda session in February.
Is there a second?
Second.
Has there been a motion, it's been moved and probably seconded, I'll open it up for questions? Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
I guess I'm, just want to clarify the motion. So, are you moving forward on the sale of this, and the second part of it is to come back?
So, Commissioner Adams, the motion was to execute the sale, was to approve the sale as proposed by staff and the attorney, and then to place an additional 60-day moratorium on any future purchases.
Okay, there you go.
And then have a policy update come back, that goes to the policy committee and comes back to us on February.
Okay.
Does that clarify everything?
That clarifies it.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd ask for your vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Commission. We'll go ahead and move forward to item five. There's no nominations at this meeting, so we'll go ahead and move to item six, appointments. We have one appointment to make today, the Alliance Health Board of Directors. This is a, a nomination that's made by the chair and approved by the board, this board. I requested to appoint Vice Chairwoman Jones to Alliance Health Board, and I would ask for an appointment at this meeting to allow Vice Chairwoman Jones to attend the January meeting for the Alliance Health Board. I'd ask for a motion. Commissioner Patel?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Vice Chairwoman Jones to the Alliance Health Board. That way, today, that way she can attend the January meeting of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll go ahead and open it up for questions. Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
I will second it, but that's fine.
Sorry about that, Commissioner Adams.
That's quite all right. That's why we got the button.
The button keeps going on and on. There's been a motion properly made and seconded. I ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and, we're going to go ahead and move into closed session. I'd call for a motion. Commissioner Tyson? Commissioner Tyson?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move our board into closed session at this time. Oh. I move that we move in closed session to consult with our attorney on the Comores litigation, Cumberland County versus the Comores Company, the Comores Company FCLLC, DuPont de Morris and Company, DuPont de Morris Incorporated, and Corteva Incorporated. Cumberland County file number 22CVS 1569 to protect current client privileges, additionally to discuss personnel actions.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion to move into closed session, it's been properly seconded. I'd ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we'll go ahead, and we'll move into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we return from closed session.
Motion to move back into open session. This has been properly seconded. I'd ask all in favor of raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
With no other action in front of the board, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Or raise your right hand. All opposed?
Unanimous.
More meetings close.